Good evening and thank you for joining us. Tonight, we are, DSC TV is pleased to sponsor a meet the committee forum for the upcoming Dover Sherburn Regional School Committee election, which will be held two weeks from this evening on May 17th. We are pleased to have with us this evening the three candidates that will be running for tonight's, for the position of the school board committee. My name is Peter McStravic. I am a DSC TV board member and Sherburn resident, and I'm pleased to serve as this evening's moderator. Next to me, seated next to me is Maggie Sharon. Maggie is an educator with almost 30 years' experience in public education. She's a graduate of Wellesley College with a degree in history. She holds a Masters of Education in Curriculum and Instruction, as well as a postgraduate credentials as a reading specialist and in educational leadership. She's currently a middle school assistant principal and has lived in Dover for the past 13 years. The Sherrons have three children who are each graduates of or current students at Dover Sherburn High School. She has represented Dover at the regional school committee level for the past four years. Seated next to Maggie is Stephanie Kubey. Dr. Stephanie Kubey is a veterinary neurologist or neurosurgeon. She moved to Dover with her family five years ago and has been an active member of the school community by participating in committees such as Room Parent and Chikering and has sat on the Dover Sherburn Educational Fund Board. And most recently, she co-chaired the DSEF Gala. She takes pride in this community and has helped her son navigate through the process of passing a plastic bag ban. In the community at large, she sits on several large boards, some of which include the New England Aquarium and Zoo New England, as well as being the current chair of the Veterinary Licensing Board. And then lastly, to Stephanie's left is Carolyn Malloy. And Carolyn, I'll let you introduce yourself.
Thank you. My name is Carolyn Malloy and my husband Tim and I are lifelong residents of Dover and graduates of the Dover Sherburn High School. We have raised three children here and our youngest will be a freshman at the high school in the fall. Attending the University of Vermont, I graduated with an environmental degree. I went on to establish a successful career in sales and marketing in the Boston area. Once my husband and I started our family, we became active participants in the community. Our family has always been engaged with sports programs here in town and I currently sit on the guidance advisory committee for the middle school. We have also enjoyed being involved with the Metco program, hosting students and siblings as well as their parents. We dedicate our winters to volunteering for New England disabled sports. Thank you.
Well, thanks to all three of you very much for being here this evening and for participating in this important forum. So let's begin. Our first question, in three minutes or less, could I ask each of you to tell us why you chose to run in this election and provide a little bit about your platform and what makes it unique? And I'll start with you, Maggie.
Thanks, Peter. First of all, thank you for your kind introduction and also for your time moderating here today. Thank you to Dover Sherburn Cable TV for sponsoring our forum and to all the engaged citizens and volunteers who've worked together to make this day happen today. It's really exciting to have so much interest in our schools and to see folks getting involved in local government. So thank you to everyone. In terms of my own platform and why I'm running, I don't have a specific platform for reelection per se, but I do have three goals that are really driving me into the next term. The first is to promote inclusive excellence. I believe that right now is an important time for us to recommit ourselves to ensure the excellence of opportunity for every single child who walks in our door. Each child in our district needs to get the support that they need and to know that they're a valued member of our community in terms of how we support them in their education. Second, I'd like to see us really focus on increased student engagement. I think our students need rigorous but also relevant curriculum for the real world and for their future, not just because we've done it the same way for a long time. Why am I doing this? Are questions that students really ought to be able to ask and have the answers? Why does my work or how does my work matter? What can we do as educators to provide those real-world experiences and opportunities that will prepare our students for real life? And third, I believe that we need to continue to be fiscally responsible with the significant investment that's been made in the regional school system. Allocating resources wisely as we examine new programs, are always seeking efficiencies in how we do things, asking questions, not just doing things the way they've done before. Excellent schools drive property values up, but high taxes drive them down. And so keeping that balance as we move forward with whatever the most excellent and amazing programming we can provide is always important. Education's my passion but also my profession. Experience matters in this election and that's why I'm running for reelection right now. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Maggie. Stephanie?
Thanks, Pete. I'm running for school committee because I feel I am a good representative for the people of Dover. I have two children that have been in the schools for the last five years. I have so much respect for the quality of education they have received here. I pulled them both from private schools when we moved to Dover. I'm a working mother, I own a business, and I have a significant amount of postgraduate education, which again gives me a very good perspective to represent Dover families. I also have a medical and scientific background, which is significant to bring some light to some of the past decisions that have been made in this year and probably in the future as well regarding sleep and COVID protocols. And of course, I have the perspective of a working mom.
Great. Thank you, Stephanie. And Carolyn?
Thank you. First, I will say significant budget allocations are indicative of importance. I differ from the other candidates on what we prioritize at this time. Coming out of a worldwide pandemic, our children are facing major challenges. Most significantly, the very real effects of anxiety, depression, and I've heard from parents even talk of suicide. Our guidance offices are inundated with handling these issues. This is my priority. Also, with limited in-class learning for a year, our students have fallen behind. I have talked to many concerned parents about unmotivated students who previously were high achievers. It's no secret academic achievement is lagging, to say the least. This too is my priority. I will work to implement tools for social and emotional well-being of students as we recover from this pandemic and I will suggest a committee to look at lost academic achievement and how it can best be made up. Significant budget dollars must be allocated immediately to this very real and in some cases life or death emergency. The school committee just released a statement on equity and in recent meetings, they discussed at length allocating significant amount of the budget to implement the DSAID Anti-Racism Inclusion Diversity and Equity Agenda into every aspect of the classroom and instruction. A costly equity audit was mentioned, as well as hiring a full-time diversity training officer for the school. I want to be crystal clear. The DSAID committee does thoughtful work, but I do not believe this should be, this should take top priority over the social and emotional well-being and academic achievement of our students at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Carolyn referenced the pandemic. Obviously, a year and a half ago, none of us anticipated the impact, saw it coming or anticipated the impact it would have on education, our students. Touch wood, we can see the light at the end of the tunnel as we approach vaccinations and a return to normalcy. I'm curious, I'd love to hear each of your perspectives on, as we've returned to the classroom and as we look at the next 12 months, what do you feel the most significant priority is for the district as our students return to the classroom and try to, as I said, regain that normalcy? Maybe we'll start with Stephanie this time.
So I think that our highest priority for the district as it returns to normalcy is understanding that we need to get the children back to their education and their social and emotional growth and development, which is so important for them. We also need to learn from our present and past and set better protocols in place regarding sending children to school when they're sick, offering alternatives or ways to stay in contact if at home and sick. We can also take advantage of what we learned regarding distance learning and collaborate with other schools, instructors, and Zoom, and even consider offering remote and distance classes to enhance their education. We could now easily offer a way for parents to be more involved via Zoom and other platforms that can't leave work but want to be involved. They want, they can't leave their house, they can't find a babysitter, they want to attend meetings and be part of their kid's education. Even, they can even go to school performances without actually, you know, leaving home now, which is all something that we should take home and learn from. The other thing that's important to realize is that this is a really good time to work to reorient our education system to provide all of our students equitable access to meaningful opportunities for learning and thriving.
Thank you, Stephanie. Carolyn, how about you?
Thank you. As I said in my previous answer, social and emotional issues need to be prioritized immediately. That should entail allocating a significant portion of the budget to hiring additional guidance support, as well as hosting guest speakers and presenters on this topic. Creating a task force to look at the fallout from the pandemic and the impact it has had on our children is crucial. Many kids continue to suffer. The academic piece must be looked at with great care as well. Having lost a year of in-person learning, our kids suffered sitting through 80-minute class Zooms day after day for a long time, at no fault of the teachers. As mentioned earlier, high-achieving students are uncharacteristically falling behind and the domino effect continues for pretty much every type of learner. We must re-engage our students and get them back to pre-pandemic levels of academic achievement, challenging and inspiring them, meeting them no matter where they may be, offering our support. allocations from our school budget should reflect these concerns at this crucial time. Thank you.
Thanks, Carolyn. And Maggie?
Sure. Thank you. This is a really, really interesting question. I'm really grateful to be able to report today that all of our students, K through 12, pre-K through 12, I think, are now in school five days a week on a normal in-person schedule. Our ability to have provided such a relatively high degree of in-person learning this year and live learning even for students who were at home is a direct testament to the creativity, determination of our talented faculty and leadership team. You know, the decisions that were made in the fall in order to keep kids live in person, whether they were at home or in school, were really crucial decisions that ultimately made it easier for us to bring our youngest learners back way back in October, our older elementary school students back in December, and then everyone else in the 6th through 12th grade in the spring. And I have, feel like that's really work that I'm really proud of us being able to do for our students this year, given that it truly was a novel situation. We didn't know what we were doing, you know, when it started and moving on and making those decisions sort of without an exemplar or something, someone who'd done this in the past. That said, one thing that we have learned this year is the crucial importance of in-person learning for so much of what's amazing and powerful about school. Obviously, doing everything that we can to maintain our schools open for in-person learning is a non-negotiable and the number one priority I see at this point. Looking beyond, I think we need to do two things. First, we need to identify places where we had breakthroughs in effective education during remote learning. What kind of platforms, formats, or lessons were actually really powerful and worked? As Dr. Kubey said, you know, where are students who could benefit from distance learning or, you know, a more adaptive program that would be helpful to their life situation in terms of meeting their needs? Second, we do need to take stock of where students are at. We need to understand where they're at emotionally, physically, and educationally. Once we know where everyone's at, let's look at tailoring our educational and support to meet the needs of the actual students that we have. Rather than just an adopting a one-size-fits-all or, you know, throwing money at a problem, let's figure out what's going on with each student and go from there.
Excellent. Thank you. I want to switch gears to a role that actually the regional school committee is executing currently, which is one of its most important ones, and that is to identify and hire a new superintendent. We're in the midst, as many of us know, in a search for a new superintendent. I'd like to understand, first of all, what your understanding of the role of superintendent is, how it differs from that of the school committee, and the synergies that exist between the two positions. And this time, Carolyn, I'll start with you.
Okay. Thank you. First and foremost, a superintendent should have a clear vision of what constitutes a top-notch education. The most important role of the superintendent is to set the tone and direction for the entire school system. Strongest priorities within that would be ensuring academic excellence and social and emotional wellness. Part of social and emotional wellness for our students includes involvements in athletics, drama, and the many other diverse after-school clubs and activities offered at our schools. Focusing on providing high-quality enrichment activities like these must also be championed as they positively impact students' wellness and sense of purpose. The school committee's role, on the other hand, is to oversee the schools and to set policy for the schools and to be stewards of the budget. The specific role is to set policy, oversee the budget, and hire and fire the superintendent. While they may approve curriculum as part of overseeing the budget, they do not create curriculum content. The curriculum framework is largely state-mandated and the specific content is the job of the superintendent and his staff. It is imperative that school committee members represent the wishes of parents and taxpayers. Committee members have the power to represent or bring community concerns to the administration. An extensive survey was sent out to the Dover Sherburn community and from that, a preferred candidate profile was drafted. The community desires an educational leader who demonstrates a significant depth of skill and knowledge in the following four key areas: collaborative leadership, exemplary communication, systemic equity, whole-child education. Should I be elected, I would make sure that these four key areas identify by our community are prioritized in my decision process as I represent the wishes of the community. I would also ensure that the selected superintendent was committed to providing an equal opportunity for all students to excel.
Thank you, Carolyn. Maggie, how about your thoughts on both the position of superintendent, how it relates to the committee, the regional school committee, but also what qualifications should the school committee be looking for in its next successor?
Sure. Thanks. I think the superintendent role in Massachusetts Public Schools is very much akin to that of a business CEO. That person is the face of the district. They're in charge of the leadership team, curriculum, managing personnel, the whole thing. In our district, obviously, our superintendent has help with that from, you know, their central office staff, the assistant superintendent, business manager, and so forth. But it really is sort of where the buck stops in terms of leadership for the school district. My priorities for our next leader, you know, Carolyn, I can't state any better than Carolyn did in terms of, you know, the profile that the school committee and along with the community has created. And that profile, I wholly support and enthusiastically support. I'm looking for somebody who's really able to take those characteristics that she described and inspire excellence, not just for each student, but also for our educators and for all the people that work in the community and volunteer in the community to support our schools. I want someone who's got high standards for themselves and for our schools and who's able to use their skills as a leader to move our district towards all this important work that many of us have described or that's already underway. In terms of the role of the school committee, Carolyn described it very clearly. It's actually very specifically laid out in Massachusetts General Law and so there's nothing really I can more add into that except that it is challenging in a small district to have school committees that oversee just one or two schools because there's just always that temptation to get out of your lane and kind of move into operations. And that's an area where as school committee members, we really have to always check ourselves and make sure that we are staying, you know, where our governments have, you know, where our voters have sent us and kind of keeping to our job descriptions.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Wow. It's hard to be third with basic definitions. So, I mean, I 100% agree with Maggie and Carolyn. So I'm just going to kind of give you my general understanding, which is that the superintendent is essentially the CEO and the school committee is the board. And our job is to work together cooperatively between the board and the CEO and create a positive front and a role model and, you know, inspire the students of our community. And not only the students, the general community as well. I think we see that a lot. We see that here with currently Dr. Keough trying to get the entire community of Dover and Sherburn involved in his environmental work. I mean, there's some amazing things going on. I think that qualities of a superintendent, I mean, they need to be collegial and cooperative and insightful and inventive. They need to be engaging with the students of all ages, the little ones and the ones that are disengaged. They need to, you know, somehow have this magnetism, be able to draw them in and get them to drive forward and, you know, go on and be successful. And with all the changes that are coming to our community, they need to be able to do that with their parents as well because the parents are so critically involved with the students and their success, of course.
Thank you very much. Another, 2020, obviously, as we reflect back, was monopolized by the coverage of the pandemic. But we're also approaching the anniversary of George Floyd's death and certainly, as you reflect back on 2020, the Black Lives Matter movement certainly was well-received and supported throughout the US. This school district is no different. The administration, with the full support of the school committee, actually committed to being anti-racist, inclusive, of all students, regardless of race, gender, disability, sexual orientation, and gender identity. What, you know, my question is, I guess, it's a two-parter. How should the administration go about achieving these objectives of making sure that the opportunity for success is available to all students, regardless of orientation, race, religion? And what challenges exist currently within the region that we need to overcome in order to achieve these objectives? And I guess I'll start with you again, Maggie.
Oh, thank you. Well, I think that the bottom line is that addressing these very complicated and challenging problems that have been part of our country and our community for, you know, over a century is going to take a lot of hard work. I think that we're in Dover and Sherburn at a really good start in terms of the work of the Aid Coalition over the past year. This is a broad-based group with stakeholders from many different parts of our community, parents, students, faculty members, community members, you know, leadership. And I'm really, really excited to see them working and taking on some really challenging issues that we've tried for a long time to sort of gloss over or to sweep under the rug. We need to continue to broaden the base of support for this work by reaching out to local cultural groups, civic groups, and other interested folks in this community to engage in real dialogue and conversation over time so that people can come to a common understanding of why this work is important in terms of supporting every single student who walks through the door of our classrooms. Ensuring that we keep up a strong partnership with Metco Incorporated is really important as they've got a deep well of resources for those who want to lean into this work of becoming more inclusive and supportive of every student. Creating a powerful groundswell of support for this work is a first step. And the next step is to determine where are we actually at with various aspects of district programs. This is where the proposed equity audit that Carolyn mentioned will generate a lot of really crucial information. I do want to clarify, it's not going to take a significant portion of our school budget and we can certainly dig into details of that later. Once the group and our district in general has data that shows where we're actually at, I think that creating a strategic plan for equity will be an important part of our plan and will help us to better understand the inevitable challenges that are going to come as a result of our willingness to tackle a longstanding problem in our community. This is actually going to take a community effort, teachers, administrators, families, and students. We need to work together to make sure "We Are DS" isn't a hashtag, but it's actually our North Star. And we're going to keep working until every child who is part of our community feels that it's a safe, strong, and caring home.
Thank you, Maggie. Stephanie, your thoughts?
I love what you just said. "We Are DS" is our North Star. Brings tears to my eyes. That's awesome.
Thank you.
Really, I mean, I agree with everything Maggie said. We need to keep in mind that we're preparing our children for the world that they are entering. This is so important that they understand what it means to be inclusive and to be in a diverse world and to be anti-racist. And it's important that they realize that that is something that they're going to need to work on every day. We need to proactively hire diverse staff and leadership across all attributes, race, gender, sexual orientation, personality type. We need to begin to address who gets to define what is best for the kids and what, which kids they consider are best. What are we striving for? We need to erase the notion of an ideal or normal student. This is a constant battle. This is going to be, it's not something that you can just make a policy and change. It's not black and white. It's constant work. These are often assumptions that are embedded into the students that we need to work on. We need to teach and hire, we need to teach teachers and hire teachers that are culturally responsive, which means they can change with how things are changing in front of them. I really think that the Floyd incident with everything that's happened in the last year, with the pandemic, with how we've responded and noticed how there are certain cultures and people of all parts of the world that are really lacking basic rights, that this has come to light and we need to address it and we need to address it head-on and we need to do it continually for our kids.
Thank you. Carolyn?
Thank you. I would like to encourage all listeners this evening to check out the DSAID website. The DSAID website is extensive and lays out plans for implementing their vast agenda into our classrooms. Just a quick story. Over the weekend, our family watched "Gifted Hands", an autobiography of Dr. Ben Carson's life. He was the HUD director under the previous administration and also ran for president. His life story is inspirational and amazing. His drug-addicted father left the family when he was very young, so he was raised by a single mother who could not read or write. However, what she did do was encourage Ben from day one. When he was knocked down, she lifted him up with positive words, telling him, "He was smart. He could do it," and to persevere. Why do I bring up this movie? Because Ben's mother's words were the key to his successes. Rather than telling him he was a victim and oppressed, she did the exact opposite and he went on to become the first African-American leading neuropediatric doctor to successfully separate conjoined twins on multiple occasions, acting as the head of the department at Johns Hopkins Hospital. He is world-renowned and his story is remarkable. I believe when implementing DSAID into our classrooms, the objective should be to lift everyone up, not divide oppressed versus oppressors based on skin tone. This teaching can inadvertently be divisive and it's not conducive to building bridges. The sensationalized media narrative would have you believe we are all at each other's next constantly. I see a very different reality. I was in Wellesley the other day and on the town green was a large group of teens laughing and interacting and it was a very wide and diverse group of individuals. Martin Luther King would have been ecstatic to witness. This is also what I see when I'm in Boston and New York. But I turn on my television and all they show are bad actors at each other's throats on loop. Dover is truly... Dover is truly part of America's melting pot. Our schools have a steadily growing Asian population, and some are feeling excluded and marginalized. I have a white neighbor who escaped communism as a child with no more than a piece of bread in her pocket. Many families in town speak English as their second language. I am pointing all of this out because it's important to be cognizant of the fact that here in Dover, labeled as a white town of privilege, there is also inequity, hardship, and suffering. The lighter tone your skin does not make you immune to hardship. Many sacrifice everything to move to Dover for our top-rated school system. They know having a superb-rated school can set their children up for success in the future and will move mountains to make this happen. The DSAID initiative, and I quote, "will transform the curriculum." It's extremely important to be well aware of current events, but we also have to be careful not to be so reactive as to let the media narrative dictate how we are going to fundamentally change every aspect of how we have ever taught subjects. I believe right now we should be prioritizing and properly implementing goals of urgent matters. I will always be a champion for diversity, equity, and inclusivity. My resume speaks for itself. Recently, I spoke with a Metco friend of ours from DS High School days, Eric Washington. He graduated in 1990. He confirmed DS was the best thing that ever happened to him. Eric felt loved and accepted here and credits the Mudge family, among many others, for making him feel so accepted and welcomed. He would like to come back as an alum to speak to our students on this topic. Our town is home to a wide variety of diverse religious, cultural, and ethic makeups. Inclusivity to all is paramount. Our morals and values are cultivated at home and are carried forward. A school's primary job is to excel at teaching our children in a responsible manner, reading, writing, and arithmetic. We need to be careful our government-run schools should not take the place of the parents when it comes to instilling social and political agendas. I will always remain committed to Dover Sherburne's core values, commitment to community, equity, and excellence, respect and dignity in a climate of care, but they must be implemented properly.
Thank you. So we have one more question that I'd like to ask, and then I'm going to, the final question will be an open-ended one where I allow each of you to sort of revisit some of the topics. If you want to add additional points to items that you've covered, or if you want to sort of leave any final thoughts with our viewers, you'll have an opportunity to do that. So while your colleagues are answering this next question, you can spend some time thinking about what you would like to cover during that final question. So a few of you today have referenced the pride of Dover Sherburne, and we certainly are, although a small community, a very proud community. And we've always taken pride in the quality of our education and the rankings that it has received across the state and even nationally. Our position recently in the annual ranking of Boston Magazine's ranking of public high schools fell from one to nine in the last year. I'd like to hear from each of you if you would share your perspectives on the change in ranking, as well as what measures, if any, could be taken to address this change. So I'll start this time with Stephanie.
Oh, boy. This is an interesting one, especially from a business owner who deals with rankings and Google searches and how much of this is real and how much isn't. But really, really what matters is our kids' education. That should be first and foremost. So rankings aside, that's what I have to say. Our rankings fell from one to nine during a pandemic, is my understanding. This is the year that we're talking about. This is important for our community. These rankings affect the value of our homes and our neighborhoods and really the prestige of living in this community. In all honesty, probably more than it does our actual first-class education, which I would find it hard to believe that has dropped significantly. As with any business that gets low ratings, you need to figure out why they have been lowered and how best to address them. I honestly feel that knowing our rankings have dropped, our administration can work to correct the things that need to be corrected and expand on the things that give us higher rankings to increase our averages. The graduation rate fell in a year where a lot of people took gap years for very good reasons. I realize we're being compared to other communities that have had the same reasons, but we have a lot to stand up for. Like, this is, I had no issue encouraging children to take a gap year this past year. The education system is, you know, was difficult to deal with. Who's going back? Who's getting tested? What kind of education are you getting? Our class average dropped from 15.7 to 16.1. That's easily corrected or even reversed. And I'm not sure that that affects our value of education that significantly. It's a small number. I always feel that teachers should constantly be evaluated on their impact on our children. That goes without saying. Teachers' evaluations are critical, and if there's a problem, that should be addressed. I'm not sure how to address the MCAS and SAT scores, especially now that some colleges and universities are actually putting less weight on these scores. We also have had at-length discussions about teaching two tests, and is that a meaningful approach or not? My time's up. I could go on.
Thank you, Stephanie. Carolyn, please.
Thank you. Like many parents in our community, when I first heard of the drop in rank from number one to number nine, I was concerned. It was only after finding out why the rankings changed significantly did I feel better about the outcome. Part was due to the increase in class average, which was an extremely low percentage point. Although not a significant change, I would encourage smaller classes when possible for a more personalized and intimate learning environment. A second point related to graduation rates was impacted by students taking a gap year, opting to go directly to a trade school or the military. All these are extremely noble decisions and should not be counted as a negative. Third, teacher evaluations were lower, but I fully support honest feedback to teachers offering constructive criticism as how to improve teaching our students. Lastly, the MCAS and SAT scores fell as a result of bringing students with special needs back to the district and retaining other students based on the belief that those who reside in our communities should be schooled with their peers. I completely support including all students, even if it negatively impacts our ranking, and am extremely proud of our school system's decision to do this. What I would recommend, however, is that the school is proactive in reaching out and educating the community about exactly why and where the rankings changed. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. And Maggie, please.
Thanks. This is such a challenging question and issue, and I can't say that there's one thing that either Dr. Kubi or Mrs. Malloy said that I disagree with. I think that they absolutely have a handle on the situation. Mrs. Malloy has really clearly articulated sort of the district's explanation. And when we talk about being proactive, the reason why we all know this is that the district has been really proactive in helping community members to understand kind of what's going on with our rankings. From my point of view, I look at it as each ranking organization, whether it's Boston Magazine, the US News and World Report folks, or the Globe, has their own metrics on how they create these rankings. Common among them are a few things, as was mentioned already. And when you really drill down, there's precious little that separates number one from number 20. It literally could be one student's performance on one test that could make the difference. So I think it's important to look at those rankings in terms of sort of larger brackets and over time rather than specifics of number one versus number three or something like that. Secondly, some of the rankings include exam schools or charter schools that have a particular type of learner that they cater to. So I think comparing them directly to comprehensive high schools like Dover Sherburne is also really not fair in terms of how we think about where we are compared to our peers. And finally, the district has worked really hard over the past few years on some goals that while they're important and I think really add to the education and idea of inclusive excellence and education for each child, they actually have hurt us in the rankings. So first, it's been mentioned already, the idea of gap years. It's not just this year that we've supported gap years. Our guidance department has worked tirelessly to make sure that they understand a lot of different options and pathways for kids after graduation that are not just directly marching into the four-year college. As a parent who has two kids in college, and I know, Mrs. Malloy, you have one, it's an extraordinary expense to send your kids to college and to find out that they got there and they didn't really know what they wanted to do is really problematic. So anything that we can do to help our kids kind of get where they need to go and find their passion before they invest in that education, I can't stop supporting, even if that means that Boston Magazine isn't going to think that we're the cat's meow on that plan. A second example is our AP courses. In the past few years, our school has worked really hard to improve the variety of AP classes we offer, as well as to encourage more interested students to take these courses, even if they aren't guaranteed an A or a five on the exam. I support this. I think it's really right back to matching educational excellence for every single child, giving kids what they need. The alternative is, historically or in other schools that are our peer communities, those courses are really restricted to kids who the teachers know are already going to get an A. So if your student is a B student, but they're dying to take AP Government, which is one of our most popular classes, and who can argue? Everyone really benefits from learning about how our government works. Well, they're out of luck, and they're going into some other course, whereas we've taken a different tack and say, "If you're up for the challenge and you want to take on the work, we're going to support you to be in that class." That actually hurts our rankings. And I cannot, you know, play the game of Boston Magazine when it means less opportunity for our students. So it's hard to feel like now we're standing up and now we're number nine instead of number one, but I want any child who wants to take on a challenge in our school to do it. I want to provide multiple pathways to success. Kids learn so much important stuff in these classes. I can't say that we're going to exclude students just to get our rankings up. I think it's a game we need to stay aware of, but not get so deep into it that we're actually moving away from our goal of providing high-quality educational experiences and opportunities for every single child who walks in our door.
Thank you very much. So for this final question, and I'll ask our timers to just leave an open clock on this one, that I'd like to offer each of you an opportunity to summarize your key points from this evening, address any questions you may have, and sort of leave, you know, just summarize for our viewers and the constituents what your key points are and what your hopes are for the school district in the years that come. So I will start this time at the end of the table with Carolyn.
Okay. I think some of the key point takeaways is in some of, obviously, what I prioritize, I think I made entirely clear. But that I'll work to ensure that contrasting and diverse viewpoints are not only encouraged but safeguarded. I want to work to provide unique and varied instruction to inspire a diverse range of learners on every level. Work to implement tools for social and emotional well-being of students as we recover from the pandemic. And I would like to adopt transparent budgets that reflect the community's intent to best serve our students. And also, I look forward to hopefully working to hire a superintendent who will succeed in meeting the needs and the goals of the community. So, thank you.
And Carolyn, if any of the viewers or constituents have follow-up questions, what's the best way for them to get in touch with you?
Probably the best way to get in touch with me is through my email, cnmalloy@gmail.com, or either on my campaign Facebook webpage, and it's linked to my profile.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Maggie.
Thank you. Obviously, I'm running for reelection, so I'm really proud of the work I've done in our community on behalf of the school committee for the past four years. I've worked really hard to forge positive relationships with everyone in the community. We've taken, as a member of the school committee, I've taken on challenges such as evaluating and redesigning our employee health insurance and OPEB programs. These are not exciting challenges that everyone wants to hear about, but they're actually super important because they impact the long-term financial health of the regional school committee and therefore come back and impact the taxes of the Dover taxpayers. So I'm really happy that we were able to do those things. It took a lot of work to get there. Creating long-term financial stability for the region, but still moving forward and investing in important stuff. We've addressed longstanding issues and problems in special education, and I think we're on a really positive path there. I'm very proud of that work. And we've been able to support that one-to-one program that you're probably aware of at the middle school, which turns out to have been extremely crucial in the context of our unexpected move into remote learning for a period of time. Those things I'm really proud of. I think, you know, to Carolyn's point about supporting SEL and social-emotional learning and making sure that we have the guidance staff and the support services that we need for kids' emotional health, I can't argue with that. Anything that we can do to shore up those programs is really important. I think this is a place where actually our guidance department has great leadership and has been able to do a lot of really good work. If we're finding, as students are coming back, that that's someplace where we need to add, you're not going to get an argument with me from me about that. I think that's really important. I think regarding budgets, I have to say, I feel really proud that our budgets are really transparent. If you want to go digging in our school committee package, you will find that every month we get a very specific line-by-line update of where the money is going. And I have to give Mrs. Vettori, our business manager, a huge amount of credit for the work that she does every single month and over the course of the year, finding the finances so that we can move forward. I think earlier tonight was referenced how, you know, we're using a large portion of our budget to pay for an equity audit. I believe, and I don't have the specifics, but that money's coming through a grant that's specifically for that sort of thing, and some donations from families who want to support that thing. So it's not coming at the expense of experiences that we could do other things for kids. It's coming from sources for where that's what the source is for. And so I think that's really important for people to know. It's not like we're doing this and we could be doing this other thing with that same money. So I'm very proud of the work that we've done there. And, you know, obviously, as we move out of the pandemic, as we're looking at how the kids are doing, we're going to need to be paying attention to that. I just don't want us to start throwing money at a problem when we don't know 100%. You know, there are kids who've been really impacted, and there's kids who have actually thrived. You know, as much as I have friends who talk about, and my own children have had struggles, my kids are not remote learners per se, but I've had numerous families say, "Gosh, remote learning worked really well for my child. Is there a way that we could do more of that to meet the needs of kids like, say, Dr. Kubi's daughter, who's a world-class gymnast, who might need a little bit more flexibility in her educational program?" And I think that anything that we can do to take these learnings and use them to make education more responsive for every single child, I'm really a fan of. So that's what I want to do.
All right, thank you. Final word is yours, Stephanie.
Oh, boy. All right, so what, I got a half an hour? I just wanted to say first that it's really been an honor to sit up here with these ladies. The experience and knowledge that's sitting here at this table is amazing. I guess my big part in wanting to run for this position is to bring a different perspective. I don't have the knowledge that Maggie has of being involved in school systems for years and being on the board here for four years. That's amazing. You know, I am coming at this from a general perspective of a working mom who loves my town, who loves my children. I pulled my kids from private schools because I was moving to Dover. And I have been thrilled with the education, the level of commitment of the teachers, of the administration. I mean, it has been an amazing experience. And honestly, my kids and I, we drive through town and we question why we didn't move here sooner. And of course, with the money that I had to pay for private schools, I definitely do as well. I think I'm a really good representative for the community. Again, being a working mom, being well-educated, owning my own business, I feel like it can bring in different perspectives. And really, that's what the school committee is, right? It's promoting the perspective of the community and working together to create a good, a good school system, the best school system for our kids. I think that it's important that we learn from our present and our past and hopefully be able to advance our children's education and the inclusivity that we've been able to kind of take from these Zoom and remote classes, again, involving parents when they couldn't be involved before because they were working or because they're home with little ones. I think that continuing to promote inclusivity and diversity is one of our biggest challenges, and we need to take that head-on. We've already started, thanks to Maggie. We want to hire a superintendent that promotes this, and I think that it's really important that the- And I think that it's really important that the, the board, the school committee works with the superintendent in a really cooperative manner to continue to advance all of these, these issues and to continue to make the Dover Sherburne school system the best that it can be. I think that it is important, again, as a leader in the community, to be 100% transparent with everything that's, that goes on in the school committee and, and make sure that everybody understands it, even if, even if they're not zooming in or watching the YouTube channels, that they get it because we're representing you and, and we need to do this for our kids and for our community.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Thank you to Maggie Sharon, Dr. Stephanie Kubi, Carolyn Malloy for your participation this evening. Thank you to the team at DSC TV for putting on this production, and, and thank you to our viewers for, for watching. Please remember to vote on May 17th, two weeks from this evening, and we hope you have a good night. Thank you.[1774.95][1774.95]